Council Bill 562020. And school district people, if you would like, and school board people, if you would like to stay on, we would love to have you be part of this as well. This is a bill that was introduced by Liz Walsh, an act amending the Howard County code to remove the adequate public facilities ordinances exemption for conditionally exempt residential subdivision plans, and generally relating to adequate public facilities ordinance exemptions. And we have, as participants, the people who are already with us. And specifically, we have asked the Director of DPZ, Amy Gowen, to participate. And also with us today is Lou Mangione and Brian Gibbons, who are representatives of Turf Valley. And what, who were invited by Mr. Youngman?
Mr. and Mr. O is on as well.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay. And Sang O is also here.
Just to make it clear, Mr. Mangione is the developer, and Mr. Gibbons is one of the owner operators of the Village Center.
One of the owner operators of the Village Center. Okay.
They'll introduce themselves.
Yes. And Ms. Walsh, this is your bill, so you get to be first up in whatever you would like to ask or talk about, or you go.
I mean, I don't, I don't really need to ask or talk about much more than to say, I don't know that I could have designed a better lead up to this discussion than the one that we just had, which is, there is no school's capacity coming to this part of our county for 10 years, according to, as Ms. Rigby argued, an overly ambitious and probably unrealistic 10-year capital improvement program. And so, it's a lot of words in this bill, but I think everyone has arrived at the conclusion that it affects singularly Turf Valley. It affects singularly kids who go to the same schools that go to Turf Valley, and those include D1 kids, and have for a while. So, it is a D1 issue. It is not exclusively a D5 issue, but in reality, it's a county issue. I mean, we have this conversation every time we get this same group of people in a room. We do not have a realistic plan to educate in the way that we have promised them, all of the children that we continue to shove into our physical buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Does anybody have any questions of the people who are participating? I guess I have a couple of questions of Ms. Gowen, Director Gowen. And I see your hand, Ms. Katruneo. I saw, there you are.
I'll let you ask your questions of Ms. I'll let you ask your questions of Ms. Gowen, and then I can come back.
All right. Okay. Ms. Gowen, I would like, if you can, I know you weren't here then, but I'm trying to understand the origin of this exemption, and why it has gone on for so many years, I think 35 years now, and why this is the only development in Howard County that is exempt from APFO. And I don't, anything you could sort of tell us about the background? And again, I understand that you certainly weren't here when this came about, but I don't know if, as the Director of DPZ, you have access to some records that would indicate, give us a better history of why this is the way that it is today.
I don't know if Mr. Bronow, who's been here way longer, I haven't had any information on the history. I mean, this would have happened back when APFO was established in the early 90s.
Okay. Mr. Bronow, can you shed any light on this?
Yes. Right. And the interesting thing, this goes back even further than my time at DPZ. But I guess what I can say is, you know, APFO was passed in 1992, as we all know. This sketch plan of Turf Valley was approved in 1986. And so, when APFO was approved, basically, this provision was put in as a grandfathering clause. And there might have been other sketch plans at the time, I don't know. I did hear at one point, there might have been some Columbia plans, Columbia sketch plans. So, you had these sketch plans in there, probably some fairly large, could be some in Columbia, Turf Valley Plan, which is, you know, 1386 units, they were grandfathered in. I don't think it was ever the intention that Turf Valley would take this long and still not be done. We all kind of know that, it's sort of an obvious question. 35 years is a long time. So, but because it was grandfathered in, the exemption still holds, and Turf Valley has met the regulations by rephasing over time, and they met the regulations, so therefore it's still exempt.
Well, I guess there was something that we had got received that indicated they actually hadn't met the regulations, and since they hadn't met the regulations, they had to get a special exception from the Director of DPZ at the time, who found that since they hadn't met their landmark, their milestones, that they would, that there was a review of the actual regulations, and there was a determination that whatever they had done could go, didn't, that they didn't have to meet the milestones, given what they had.
Well, no, I think, I think they met the milestones, and one of the main ways they met the milestones after all of these years, there's really kind of two forms of milestones. There is the internal milestone, so you have a sketch, and a preliminary, and a final, and an SDP, and then you build the units. That's kind of the typical milestone pattern. There's also a provision in APFO that allows phased projects to rephase once every four years. And that's the primary reason why the length of time is elongated as it has been. The developer requested to rephase this Turf Valley project, and they took advantage of that once every four years provision in APFO to do that. So, the DPZ administrations, at the various times that this occurred, approved and, you know, enforced the provisions of the milestones, and that's why they basically are about halfway done, 35 years later, and we're at the point we're at now.
So, I'm curious, and Mr. Bronow, since you have been doing this for quite some time, if you know whether or not there are other jurisdictions who passed APFOs where there are still exemptions?
I don't know that. Yeah, I don't know if there's other exemptions in other counties that passed APFOs.
I mean, I happen to be familiar with Montgomery County, and I know that they passed their APFO in 1982, and they phased out their exemptions, and they had lots of exemptions when they passed their APFO, because grandfathering, you know, was necessary when you do something like that. And then they phased out, they had a bill in 1987 that then permanently phased out those exemptions over the course of time. And it wasn't 35 years. It was, it was like a normal amount of time. And I'm just wondering if you knew of any other jurisdictions that had done that?
No.
You don't know?
Are you saying, yeah, did they do that because of the fact that some projects were taken longer than intended, so the original grandfathering really wasn't as effective?
I think that there were, there were actually council members who said, you know, we are, our roads are overcrowded, and so are our schools, and we can't afford to have all these projects not phased out. We need to have some definition here. We need to know when this situation is going to end, and when the developments will have to be, they will have to adhere to APFO. So, and we all know that Montgomery County roads are still extremely busy. So, I don't know how much it helped to actually have all these developments subject to APFO, but yeah, that was the primary purpose for, at the time. And then, of course, now it's schools. So, but they did phase out all of the exemptions in 1987. But they grandfather, they, I'm sorry, they didn't grandfather them. They had an exemption bill in 1987 that said, you are no longer exempt, but we will allow you to have a certain amount of time, and it will be definitive, as opposed to forever and ever. So, it was, the non-exemption was phased in.
Right. Yeah, I'm not familiar with that or any other counties.
Okay.
Handling of that, yeah.
I was just curious if you did know anything about that. And then, Ms. Katruneo?
I was wondering if there's ever been an analysis, or if we could possibly do an analysis of the number of schools, or the instances that have been closed because of the impact of the enrollment from Turf Valley into schools in the north or part of the county, because it's sort of a trickle-down effect. Because when we talk about this, we have to think about, are there developments that have been delayed because the school is so overcapacity, because of the lack of regulation of the Turf Valley development? Manor Woods was significantly overcapacity until a major redistricting, and then it's sort of, we had the Waverly addition come on board, which provided some relief, but already overcapacity. That addition did, we were at 100% as soon as it was done. So, I'm just wondering if that has ever been done, because, you know, that, we've had several developments in that area that have been on hold, whether it's right next to Turf Valley, or the trickle-down effect. I think it's something to work, we're thinking about. Also, in 2004, Turf Valley asked for an increase in density, which they got without any kind of consideration for the school area. So, it was originally supposed to be, I think, maybe 978 units, something like that, and they got an increase in density, which has further exacerbated the problem. So, even with the original consideration of the development, it's not really, because that's what happens, it's a creep effect. You know, what we end up with is far different than what we started with, with many, many of our major, and even small-sized developments. So, those are just two things I wanted to bring up, and hopefully, nobody will annihilate me like Mr. Youngman.
Mr. Youngman, you will not.
With questions.
Ms. Katruneo.
Ms. Katruneo and I have so much we argue about. This is, this hasn't made it in the top five yet.
No, no one needs to see it.
Ms. Walsh, did you have any?
No, actually, Mr. Bronow, could you point me to the section of the code, or is it in the zoning regulations that allows this rephasing every four years? I can't, I'm just.
I'd have to hunt for it.
Okay. Can you, can you just send it to us?
Yeah, I can let you know what that is, yeah.
All right. Thank you. I will know, I mean, I did not have my hand up, Chair Young, but I will take the opportunity.
Oh, sorry.
We heard in, we heard in public hearing that not only was this project that's taken, you know, 35 years to build half out, been exempted from the APFO Schools and Roads Test, but there was concern that they were also being exempted from other changes in law. And given how difficult, honestly, it was for us to find this, right? The exemption doesn't say Turf Valley or anything. I worry that there are other exemptions out there. We've been looking on forest conservation and MIHU, water income housing units, because those were the two raised during public hearing. We have not tracked down the answer on forest conservation, but we have confirmed that because, and I still honestly can't believe this either, but because it is a planned golf course community, PGCC, under the zoning regulations, that there is zero MIHU requirement for the duration of this project. So, that, you know, I didn't realize that until the public hearing caused me to look into it, and I can't believe that, and we'll try and get follow-up and confirmation. If Dr. Gowen, you can say, you know, that's right now, that would be helpful. But it is, it is problematic, I think, that whatever this, you know, rephasing every four years has allowed, has basically exempted, what is it, 800 acres of development from the evolution of land use regulation over a period extending three decades. That's, that is, to me, that is against public policy. It's not even a matter of discussion, but I will continue to look for them. If someone's watching this and is like, hey Liz, there's three other things that haven't been complied with here, I'm happy to look into that, too. But this was just something that came up on the campaign trail. Again, my kids go to schools that are crowded with Turf Valley kids. It is, it has been a big issue. At first, we thought it was a DRA. We got rid of DRAs, and because of this exemption, this particular development is exempted on a scale that would be un, it would be, you couldn't do it now, under our law as it is. And that, you know, that is at base what we're going here for, but it certainly has unearthed some other problems with, with that particular development.
Any other questions? Mr. Youngman?
This is a question for Mr. Bronow. You talked about phasing, so being able to come in every four years and rephase, that's essentially pushing out the delivery date on units that have already, that we already know are coming, right?
Right.
Okay. I, I know that Chair Young pointed out that Mr. Mangione is also on the phone. I have some questions for, for he, and for Mr. Bronow, and I think that probably they're both going to share the answers. So, can Mr. Mangione hear us? Oh.
He's muted. You're muted. You need to unmute yourself.
I'm muted now?
Now you're muted.
There you are. Perfect. Perfect. And so, I'm going to ask you both, and I guess you'll just have to jump in and play off each other. So, do either of you have a sense of how many residential units have been added, have been approved, essentially either built, or at least are sitting in these, in these school projections, more recently than when all the Turf Valley units went into the school projections? And that's a tough question, because it's been a long time, I know.
Well, I guess I didn't quite understand your question. Was your question, how many units in Turf Valley have been recently approved?
In the whole, in the whole school region?
Oh, the whole school region?
Yeah. So, like, like, you know, whatever year the Turf Valley units went into the school projections, I mean, probably the first time we ever created the APFO open-close chart, you know, and over that passage of time, how many other residential units have been approved and cleared through APFO after the Turf Valley units were already in the projections? Do you have a sense of that, or?
Yeah. So, I can't answer that directly, but it's probably something we could find out. So, I think what that would be is looking at all building permits, like in the 90s, and the 2000s, and 2010s, that occurred in, I mean, the districts and the schools have changed over that time period. So, you're saying, have, like, look in the vicinity of Turf Valley, maybe the current Manor Wood School District?
Yeah.
And look at all the plans that have been approved and built during that timeframe?
Yeah. Was, was, was Waverly Woods already, did they have to clear APFO, or did they go in pre-APFO also?
Yeah, Waverly, yeah, Waverly went through APFO, because that was built, you know, in the 90s.
Right.
So, definitely Waverly was built in the 90s. You know, Turf Valley is currently in the Waverly Elementary School District. It had been in the Manor Wood School District, so it was redistricted over time, and it was probably in a different district even prior to the, to the 90s. But Waverly probably is the largest development in the vicinity of Turf Valley, you know, because it was also a planned, planned community.
And most recently, Chapel Gate just cleared through, right? What, 120 townhomes or something?
Chapel Gate is a C, yeah, a CEF plan that, yeah, it's right at the corner of Marysville, and 40, I think.
So, without knowing the exact numbers, so without knowing the exact numbers, since these, since the first projection was created, that Turf Valley was in, it's, I would think it's fair to say that at least a couple thousand other housing units have gone through APFO during the period that Turf Valley was not required to clear through APFO.
Yeah, I mean, depending on how big the area you draw, you know, there's quite a bit of development up in the north.
So, Mr. Mangione, so during that period of time, when all these other, you've got your approvals, you're grandfathered on APFO, you know, that's, that's, I was going to ask the question, I probably just answered it for myself. Why didn't you guys go through APFO during the couple decades that you would have passed?
Well, I'd like to clear up some misinformation. One of the reasons Turf Valley was held, took, has taken so long to development, to develop, is because, first, we built a third golf course that we eventually had to eliminate because of competition from the, from other, other people, including the county. But we really didn't get our act going until 2005, if that's the right word, when we had the fourth amended comprehensive sketch plan, which was subject to APFO, and no one's ever said that, which caught up on many things. And so, we were at like a 15-year development, and we have developed at a more of a controlled pace, because unlike other developers, you have to buy their land and throw a new development in there, we had an existing community with an existing golf course, and we felt our project was better suited to come in on a more controlled phase. And the whole time, we were following all the regulations. We're not exempt from everything, and we run the impression that our school kids were being counted. We've been negotiating with the school, the county for over 10 years on the school site. I think there's a lot of misconception about Turf Valley. I agree, there's a problem with schools. Turf Valley is happy to be a part of any conversation to resolve it. Tell us what, tell us what you want to know. I mean, ask us the questions, we'll, we'll come up with a solution. We don't want to build houses where kids can't go to school. And I feel like we've been ignored, and think this, like, we don't, we do nothing to follow no rules. We follow all the rules. We're not exempt from forest conservation completely, and there's a reason we are exempt that's got nothing to do with being in Turf Valley, for parts of it. So, there's, there's all kinds of things, there are misconceptions, and there is this idea that we want to just jam things on people. That's not true either. We're willing to work with anybody who wants to discuss the issues and find a way to resolve it. We don't like the idea of being singularly pointed out, targeted, when other communities are piling through. If you look at the kids that come out of Turf Valley, I don't know the answer, but I can tell you that it's less than most other communities. The type, you know, we don't have that type of house that generates lots and lots of kids, except for a project called The Villages, which came out in full force when they were going to be redistricted at Bushy Park. Other than that, our communities have not generated that many, that many kids. I can go on and on about what I consider to be targeting and misconception, and I don't mean to insult anybody, but just give us an opportunity to talk about this thing. We'll work it out. But we've been following all the rules and regulations. We have not been treated anywhere, any better or worse than anybody else. We just, there are reasons for what was done all along, and that can be, that can be explained and discussed. And that's, that's how I feel about this. Thank you.
Thank you. The reason why I asked the question about why you didn't take the APFO test all during those years, while all these other neighborhoods that were coming in after you, was to sort of make the point that had you known someday you were going to need to pass APFO, you would have taken the test during the 20-odd years that you could have passed it. And now, the region, and now, the, now the region's full because of thousands, not hundreds, thousands of units that have been added to that region under APFO, and now, all of a sudden, you know, you're, you're being asked to take a test that you could have passed a long time ago, but you weren't, weren't asked to. Next question I have for Mr. Mangione or Mr. Bronow, when was, what's this increase in density that, I guess, to Chair Young, or somebody, I wasn't aware of an increase in density 15 years ago?
That wasn't me.
It was actually, Jeff, do you want to answer that, Shri? Well, I was going to say, so, and, you know, you could clarify or correct me, but from what I remember, there was a planning board, like 368 around the 2004 timeframe, and it added, I think, I think Ms. Katruneo mentioned 900, my recollection, recollection is that it added about 260 or 270 units to the 1386 that were approved on the original sketch, 86 back in 1986. So, it was an additional 260-something units that, because it was an amended sketch, adding those extra units, or that extra density, that part was subject to APFO.
Right.
So, it did take that APFO schools test, allocations test, and I think, if I remember, it failed, it had failed the schools test at that time, it might have delayed the units, it might have failed it one or two years, but then eventually it passed APFO, and those units are now being, being built. And a road, road study was done for all those, et cetera.
Would these be the 280, 286 or so units that, if you saw the fiscal note that the auditors put together, you know, we've got the original 1379 that were in the old sketch plan, and then there's this additional, like, 285 that are subject to APFO? Is that, was that the increased density that was granted, you know, 16 years ago?
Yeah. And I just pulled up, we also created, at the request of the auditor, and at the request of county council members, we created like a summary chart with a map, and I just pulled it up, and I'm showing 267 that is from the non-exempt portion of APFO. But it's, yes, it's around that number.
The, and all of the units are, Mr. Bronow, they're, all of the units now are in the school projections, the 1379, including the 535 or so that would be subject to this bill? They're, they're already in the school projections?
Yeah. So, everything, the 1386, well, I think there's around, let me see, let me pull this up. So, what's built now in Turf Valley is, 710 units are built. The total projects will ultimately be about 1630. That includes the 1386 plus the, the 2-something that we just mentioned. So, 710 are built. Does that answer your question, or what?
It does. It does. I only have one more question, and...
Can I answer the question on density?
Sure.
We, we did not get increased density. We added additional acreage, which is one of the reasons we wouldn't, we did not start from the beginning. We, we knew we were going to get this acreage, it was a question of time of getting it. We eventually got it from the Waverly Woods developers, and when we got it, it added more acreage. It did not increase density. It increased the total number of units, not the density. We still have a relatively low density for our type of, our type of development.
Got it. Perfect. Thank, thank you. This last question's for Mr. Gibbons. Mr. Gibbons is with the, the group that owns the Village Center. How has, how has this rephasing and, and pushing units out, you know, slowing down the pace of the development impacted you guys?
Thank you. This is Brian Gibbons speaking. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
We can.
Okay. Thank you. If I can, Councilman Young, I just want to make a disclosure before I continue the conversation. I, I'm speaking today as my capacity as CEO of Greenberg Gibbons, the owner of the Turf Valley Town Square. I do serve as a commissioner on the Internet Agency Commission on School Construction, and so, all these things you are talking about today, I have a lot of experience with, so I want to make it clear, and if I have to vote on something to do with Turf Valley, I'll recuse myself.
No, no, no. We want you to stay on there.
Yeah. Mrs. Katruneo wants to speak to you after this meeting.
This is the best news we've gotten yet. This is, yes. Okay. This is, yes, okay, yeah.
I did feel I need to, to close that. Now I've lost my train of thought.
Sorry. Well, and I guess the other, the other disclosure, I, I thought you were going to maybe disclose, Mr. Gibbons, that we graduated from law school together.
Oh, is that okay?
Class of '87.
It's, it's, I can't believe it was that long ago.
I know.
That was before the exemption, that was before the exemption we're talking about.
Yeah, I know. So maybe we should go back to that, yes.
So, so I'm sorry, so, look, frankly, you know, my concern is that when we built the, the town square, you know, we, we put a lot of effort, a lot of money into it. I'm a local person, lived there for 30 years in Howard County. And we wanted to create a great local community asset. And it was built based on the promise of future residential construction, because the existing residential construction that was there did not justify building the type of project that we built. So we, we, we got it off the ground, we got it leased, I got 19 local businesses out there, and they all did that on the basis of more residential to come. And this is, this, the, the idea was, it's a local, local asset that we wanted people to be able to walk to and enjoy. And there really are probably over 1,000 units that were planned that were walkable to the Village Center. However, it, it has been slow-going, and I, you know, I will blame part of that on Lou Mangione, because he demands a lot of the builders. And I think that, you know, he requires all brick, and I know that I went through a lot trying to get through the approvals with him on what we are producing. So I think that's part of the reason why it's slow. But frankly, it's been a slow opening due to, due to the slowness of the residential. We have struggled. And just finally, in the last 12 months, prior to the pandemic, we started to gain some traction. Harris Theater started to gain some traction, some of the, our restaurants were gaining traction, even our smaller tenants were starting to gain traction. The pandemic hit, combined with the internet craze, obviously, it's having a significant negative impact on retail. And, you know, you know, if you read the newspapers, obviously, there's predictions for, for great vacancy for retail. And if we don't have this residential construction, and I know this is a totally different issue than school capacity, and I appreciate that very much, that is going to have a significant negative impact. And I think all the gains that we have gotten over the last, literally seven years, because we opened in 2013, will go away. And so my, my feeling is there must be a, a way to phase this that's reasonable for the county, and that's reasonable for the developer, and that doesn't destroy the town square. And I'm not going to say what it is, but whether there's a schedule, a takedown of units, that for residential units over a period of time. Certainly, the county was aware of, of Turf Valley. Certainly, the county could have planned for Turf Valley, because it was in the numbers the whole time. Everybody knew, even though it did have the exemption, everybody knew the residential was approved and was coming. I'm disappointed it hasn't come faster, just like, just like everybody else. But I think there's got to be a reasonable resolution to this.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons.
Those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
It does seem like phasing in the...
I do, I, I did hear through the grapevine, and I'm not suggesting that we talk about it on, on this, that DPZ and the Mangionis are talking about further rephasing.
That would be great.
Now that, now that Mr. Mangione sort of understands where we're at.
That would be wonderful.
Sorry, Mr. Gibbons.
That would be a good resolution to this situation.
That's all.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Does anybody else have any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. It was good to see you again, Mr. Gibbons.
You too.
After many, 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 many years, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Be well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're...